All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome back to our special town meeting in the town of Stoughton. I now call the order to 2024 Special Town Meeting of the town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. This is the second session of the Special Town Meeting. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street, right here in Stoughton. This meeting is also being broadcast live and livestreamed through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please, at this time, if you're able to rise and stand as you join me in pledging allegiance to our national flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you all. Please be seated. Couple of messages, messages. Please remember to silence your phones, your cellphones. Tonight, I'm not going to tolerate any shout-outs, any yelling or screaming. Obviously, no fist fighting here in the auditorium. All right, I apologize, but we can't allow that. All right. But I will, those people who yell out, I'm going to ask you to leave the room for about five to 10 minutes. When you settle down outside, you can come back in, but you will be asked to leave the room by the moderator. So no more tolerating any of that tonight. All right. Hope you all understand, but Monday was a little bit too much. It wasn't that bad, but it was enough. You have to draw the line here. The other thing is...
Time-out?
Yeah, time-out is all the way against the left wall out there. You have to face the wall. All right. All right, let's keep moving. Thank you all for your input. I appreciate your comments. Couple other things is, as we go through the articles tonight, I do have a couple other announcements we're going to make, but the other item I just want to mention is, if you listen to the prior speaker, the speaker before you, or the speakers before you, please don't repeat the same questions. I've noticed some of that. You should be retaining some of what's going on here, and I don't mean that to offend anybody, but if you know you have a couple of questions prepared and someone asks that question ahead of you, cross it out on your list and just go to the next question if you have one. All right? Hope we all agree on that. The other thing is, I'd like to just introduce our town officials again. We have Dr. Byetta from the schools. We have, let me just take a look at my list, because as you're up here, you're, sometimes the brain just stops working here. Kathryn Weiss, Chair of the Stoughton School Committee. Lindsay Kreckler, Vice Chair. School Committee members Armando Baboza and Chris Shannon. I think they're all here. Good evening to everybody. We have Tom Coulter, our Town Manager, Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager, Elizabeth Zaleski, our Finance Director. And to Mark's left, we have Select Board Member Lou Gieto. Chair of the Select Board, Steve Cavey. Member of the Select Board, Deborah Roberts. We have our Town Council, Brian Winter. And I'd like to give his firm a little name out there from me, Talman and Costa. I think I got that right? All right, thank you. Also, on my side over here, we have Suzie Gross from the Town Clerk's Office. Samantha Rego, she's the Moderator's Secretary/Executive Assistant. If she can't, if I can't handle you guys, she'll escort you out the door, okay? So she's going to help me out this evening. And I'm sorry, your first name? Michael. We have Michael here, also from the Clerk's Office. We have the Chair of the Finance Committee, Bonanokian. We have the Vice Chair, Dave Laurie. So I welcome all our officials, and I also welcome all the town meeting representatives. Thank you all for coming this evening. And we also should welcome any town residents that are here watching the activities tonight, and also we welcome the people watching on TV. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to recognize Bob Cone from Precinct Five for a special announcement.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask for a minute of silence. We buried a 35-year veteran of the Stoughton Police, also retired 35 years. His name is Jacob Reed. He was buried this morning at 11:00. Jake Reed was an instrumental part of the D E A program way back. He also was lived in Stoughton for 99 years he lived to, and he was an actor. His family actually started the Auditora Temple, which is on Central Street. So I'd like to have a minute of silence in his memory, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Cone. Next up, I'd like to recognize Roberta Habbak for a special announcement.
I'm here, Bob.
I'm sorry. You're quick. Go ahead, Roberta.
Good evening, everybody. I have been, I'm Roberta Habbak, Precinct Seven. I have been granted permission by the Town Manager and the Select Board to create a Christmas tree made out of your town meeting books. So if you'd be so kind, after you leave here tonight, unless you need them, there's buckets outside, and if you could put them in, we'll have a cute little Christmas tree at the town hall. And I actually was suggested I make a menorah, and I actually will tell you what's already done, so it's going to be fun. So I'd appreciate it, and everybody have a good night. Thank you.
All right, the next order of business, we have to determine whether we have a quorum to proceed with the Special Town Meeting. So I'm going to ask each precinct chair, when I call your name out, to give me the number of town meeting reps present. Juan Fox, Precinct One. 18, Precinct One. George Stilinski, Precinct Two.
20.
20 for Precinct Two. Matt Callis for Precinct Three.
18.
18 for Precinct Three. Precinct Four, Jerry McDonald.
18.
18 for Precinct Four. Kamal Drews, Precinct Five.
16.
16? Thank you, 16 for Precinct Five. Robert Kirby, Precinct Six.
16.
16, Precinct Six. Diane Dolan, Precinct Seven.
18.
18, Precinct Seven. And for Precinct Eight, Pat Yanikowski. 16, thank you. Give us a couple of moments to tally up. All right, we have 140 town meeting reps present. We only need 85 for a quorum, so we obviously have enough to do the business of the town this evening. All right, so we have 140 town meeting reps. Appreciate everybody coming in this evening. So I do declare a quorum is present. Another note, if you happen to leave early, please turn in your clickers to your precinct chair. No one's allowed to vote using any other clicker except the one that's been assigned to you. All right, I know nobody does that, but I just want to remind you, just in case you happen to pick one up and press a button by mistake. So only the clickers that are assigned to you, those are the ones you use. All right, so now, we're going to go ahead and, if we're ready, we're going to try to test our clickers. Everybody have the clicker in hand? Oh, I did mention already, John, silence your cellphones. I'll remind everybody again, please silence your cellphone, including myself. Make sure my cellphone is turned down. All right, so we're going to test our clickers. Please click now. One, two, or three. Ones for yes, as you know, two for no, three abstention. If you have a problem with your clicker, or it doesn't look like it's registering, please come down front. No charge. You have to wake them up? Yeah, we're told you have to kind of wake them up since they're in the box for a night or two. But if you have any questions at all, it's worth coming down to double-check before we proceed. Are we good? Should we retest? Yeah, well, let's retest the clickers one more time. All right? Not too difficult to do. Can we go? Nope. Once Samantha brings it up. Okay, please test your clicker right now. Vote, one, two, or three. Just wasn't 100%. Keep clicking, just to make sure it goes through. Three seconds, two seconds, one, let's see what we have. All right, I think we're good. Everybody good? Okay, let's proceed. All right. Procedural motions that were motioned, second, and approved on Monday evening, November 18th, are still in effect this evening. All right, on Monday evening, November 18th, we finished up with Article 12, the FAA lease agreement. So let's move to Article 13, School Capital Projects. That appears on page, middle of page 23 of your warrant books. Give everybody a second to go there, and then I'll ask Chair of the Finance Committee, Von Anokian, for the motion. I think we're ready.
That the town vote to reallocate and transfer $368,560 from the below schedule of articles to fund the school department capital requests in the aggregate as set forth below.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Carolyn Campbell. All right, could I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 2 to 1 to accept and recommend to town meeting Articles 13 as written in the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Just give me one moment, please. Okay. Okay, presenting this article is Dr. Byetta. Dr. Byetta?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Joe Byetta, Superintendent of Schools through you and the town meeting. Before you this evening are the four school capital projects, A, B, C, and D. A and B, the telephone system replacement at $40,000, and the completion of the HVAC services at the Daw School for $125,000 are actually part of the sunset situation that was resolved on Monday night. Article, the C grades, K-5 charging carts for the Chromebooks at $82,810 are to actually bring back our students keeping the technology in the classroom so that we are not repairing as many Chromebooks as we are currently doing. That would be K-5, so that you know how that works. It's basically a cart that's, that goes into the wall in electricity, and then by putting the carts in there, they all get recharged. The capital needs assessment is new. This is for all eight of our current buildings at $127, 750, and that is to meet a longstanding need from the schools working with the town to have an actual municipal town capital needs program. Currently, we base a lot of it on a year-to-year basis. What would happen here is we would be hiring a firm that would come in, provide the entire building envelope for every single one of our buildings. By that, I mean electrical, HVAC, everything you can think of, safety, et cetera, doors, windows, roofs, and so on and so on, and also technology would be in there. The report will allow the school committee to then take a look at prioritizing what those should be over a five-year plan that would then be published through the town. I believe it's Mr. Tisdale who's leading that effort, and we would have a comprehensive municipal school capital plan for the town of Stoughton. We don't have the expertise within the district without going outside. This would be a procurement process, and we would be looking at various different companies throughout the Commonwealth that are known for doing this. I'd like to turn over the explanation of the finances as it pertains to where the $368,560 is coming from through you, Mr. Moderator, to our Director of Finance.
I agree to that. Go ahead. Thank you. Elizabeth, can you introduce yourself to the body, please?
I can. Thank you, Dr. Byetta. My name's Elizabeth Zaleski. I'm the Finance Director for the town of Stoughton, and the funding sources come from multiple articles that have been outstanding since, I think the oldest one here is 2013. So by working with the sunset clause that this legislative body voted in May of 2023, we are closing these articles and reallocating the $368,560 to fund the necessary capital equipment that the school needs. We wouldn't normally do this until the spring, but we're trying to clean up our books and utilize the funds in a proper fashion. There is no borrowing, there is no use of free cash. This is available funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Byetta, did you want to go back and add anything?
Yes, I'd just like to thank our Finance Director for coming up with this plan of utilizing articles that haven't been completed, as well as the town meeting's vote for Monday night on the sunset, because this is truly money that's, that was, is being allocated through money that's already gone through the pipeline, if you will. So it's not any new funds that we're asking for at this time. The timeliness of it is important, because these projects, if approved tonight, actually allow for me to begin work on these things right away. We are in line to get the capital plan to the hands of the town by late spring, early summer at the latest, so that when we start the work next year for FY '27, the capital needs project on the school site is completed.
Thank you, Doc, Dr. Byetta. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, just one minute, Mr. Starr. Let me just say, this is a time for technical questions, and one moment. All right, Mr. Starr?
I just had a question. Name is Edward Starr, I was Precinct Six. I had just a question, how come somebody in the kindergarten needs a computer?
We are a full one-to-one district in terms of technology, so from iPads to Chromebooks, every student has one in every single classroom throughout the district.
I mean, should they have a telephone, too?
They do not have a telephone. That's a parent prerogative, not mine.
I'm concerned that these young kids, they are getting the wrong...
Mr. Starr, excuse me. You had two questions. Thank you. You can ask your pro and con debate and come up with your comments, okay? Thank you very much, though, for your comments, sir. Jim, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, you'll be next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Guerin, Precinct Six. How is this Section D, the capital needs assessment, handled prior to this article tonight?
It wasn't handled. What we did is we took a look at the general cost of doing an eight-building capital needs, and that's how we came up with this number, literally through third parties, and now we will have to complete a capital need study that does not cost more than the $120,000 that's in the request tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa Lyons?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So I was watching this, first of all, you know I'm very happy that the school is going to do a capital assessment, so thank you. The only concern I had about that capital assessment is I heard on the school committee that it was only going to take two months to do in time, and I just don't understand why it's costing $120,750 to do two months' worth of work. That's somebody's yearly salary.
Sure, great question, thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the person asking the question. So in general, this is an eight-to-10 week visit and project, interviews, sit-down with all of our folks about the needs of the district, i.e. the Director of Facilities Office, my office in particular will be the two that will be significantly involved, as well as the Technology Office. Those will be the three main offices. What they do is they will bring in HVAC folks to just look at HVAC, roofers to just look at roofs, and so on and so forth, through that one company that has that wraparound service. Once the report is completed, then the second part of the report becomes a cost analysis. Today, if that HVAC system was to break, what would that cost for July 1st? We will get those cost estimates as part of the report. That will be their internal process, not ours. Once we have all of that printed, that will be part of our final report that's provided to the town, and then for their published. On a yearly basis, what we will do as a school department is take a look at what is the new cost for that item in terms of the industry standard.
Thank you very much.
And I just had a follow-up question that relates to that, and I don't think it's going to fall solely on Dr. Byetta to answer it, so if it could be a joint answer, I think that...
All right, let's have the question.
So the capital, so the school capital, the goal here is to make Stoughton one town and less divisive. How, how is the plan going to be combined, and are we going to work together as a town to prioritize the capital projects that need to be done?
I'm going to rule that out of order.
I knew you would, Bob.
All right, no problem. Thank you for your question, but please take a seat. All right, next up is Mr. Bob Cone. Please identify yourself.
Bob Cone, Precinct Five. Telephone system for a variety of schools, what does this consist of, and what schools are we doing?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Speaker. The telephone system issue, it goes back to the actual building of the high school project, of which we had gone out at the time as part of the project to make sure that there is telephones within this building. What happened, and I'll quote, I believe you have the actual cost in your packet, but what happened was, to prevent the delays of the phones being installed here, we went back in and took all of our stuff that we already had as a department, and now we're asking to backfill those phones, because we now need to put up new phones throughout the district when they break, when they're longer in use, et cetera, et cetera. We're basically backfilling what we had given to the project at the beginning.
I can't understand that. That's terrible business, and I think you understand...
If there's a question, Mr. Cone, please ask it.
Also, on your air conditionings for the Daw School, are the air conditioners in already?
The Daw School has full air conditioning, about 90% of the building. It's now waiting for the electrification, which is the request of these funds that were originally in the article, and the given school, which is not needed through this process, is also being done this coming summer, all through federal grants.
All federal grants? Are the air conditioning, we're talking Daw School, because this is what you're talking...
Mr. Cone.
I'm asking the question for a reason, sir. Has the air conditioner already been installed?
Mr. Cone, you asked two questions.
This is the second question, sir.
I'll let you expand just a little bit, but that's it.
I just asked, are the air conditioners installed? And when you put them in, did you understand that you had to put a service into that project when you started this?
I wasn't present as your superintendent at the time. Here's what I can tell you. Yes, the Daw has AC units already installed. When the sunset clause came in, we had to come to a stop. We could not order certain things, and the out on those orderings was 40 weeks for the electrical information. So we got caught in the sunset law, and we couldn't finish the project. That's the reason why the sunset law passing on Monday allows for us to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you up again, Lisa?
Yes, because I only got my one question.
No, you, well, you asked a second question, but it was ruled out of order.
I didn't get an answer to that, so...
I ruled you out of order, so please take a seat.
I can't ask the second question, Lisa.
You did ask the second question. Back to you, Marina. Please identify yourself.
Marina Ryans, Precinct Seven. I'm just concerned that the replacement for the telephone systems and telephones, right, as I understand, is $40,000. So I want to know how many losses, how many phones that don't work, and whether you get insurances, and what you do in order for insurances to cover it, and if you, if phones, I'm sorry, it's one related. So how many insurances you have for the phones just to save taxpayers money without throwing them away?
The phones have a one-year warranty in general. In terms of the average phones, we lose about four phones a year to wear and tear. They, they come off the wall, whatever the situation may be. We're simply asking, in this process, that when the school building project, in order for it to meet its deadlines and get done, we utilize the phones that we had, and we no longer have that stock available, and we're asking for the stock to be returned, as, to be quite honest, was agreed to do so as part of that project.
As a follow-up question, I think it makes sense, and it will be cheaper for the taxpayers to save our money, is to buy additional insurance. It's going to be cheaper than...
Marina, is there a question in there?
Sorry about that. So I think it's cheaper, in my opinion, what do you think, to get additional insurance for the phones in, in case phones get lost or kids lose them because they don't care, but we do?
I really don't have an opinion on that, simply because I'm not an expert on the insurance of telephones, but I can tell you that the insurance process for technology has been one where we've gotten away from that business, because the recurring cost is actually significantly less than paying for insurance.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have technical questions on Article 13? Seeing none, we're going to move on to pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Seeing none, we're going to vote this all together, because the finances are all combined, so we're not going to separate this out.
Can you make a point of order to separate them out?
No. I'm not going to recognize you on that, because the finances are all combined in the back. I will ask Town Council if you want to just weigh on that for a second.
I couldn't hear the question.
Oh, she wants to know why she couldn't separate, separate the vote individually. I just want to have you weigh in, Mr. Town Council.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, two points on that. One is, we've already had the presentation and technical questions, and so the time to make a motion to divide the question would have been before all that. Second of all, this is the second point, the finances for this article are all integrated. They're all combined, and so we wouldn't be able to tease out the individual A, B, C, and D based on that grid. It's really a fully integrated article, so I don't think it's possible or appropriate to divide the question in this particular case. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to vote this all together, just because of the way the Town Council explained it, the finances are all combined, so we can't break them out. All right, so are we ready? All right, and this is a simple majority, because there's no borrowing involved, so please vote now, one, two, or three. One, yes. Two, no. Two, no. All right, Article 13, motion passes. One, 28 yes, 14 no, zero abstentions.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the, to the membership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Byetta and Elizabeth Zaleski. Thank you both. All right, let's move on. Next article is Article 14. That appears in the books on page 25. The title is Prior Appropriations Closeouts Under Article 70, ATM 2023 Sunset. That's on page 25. When you're ready, I'm going to ask Mr. Von Anokian for the motion.
That the town vote to close the municipal appropriation articles and return the funds to the accounts of which the original appropriation was made, and vote to close community presi- and vote to close Community Preservation Act appropriations and return funds to the accounts of which the original appropriation was made and/or pay down outstanding debt as related to each article, all as printed in the Article fourteen.
Seconded by John Zavino. Mr. Anokian, can you read the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted fifteen to zero to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fourteen as written in the warrant.
All right, we also have a community preservation committee report. Michael Barrett, can you identify yourself, please?
Michael Barrett, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Committee voted five zero one to close the four CPA projects listed in Article fourteen of the warrant.
Thank you, sir. And now we have a presentation by Finance Director Elizabeth Zaleski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Zaleski, no end.
I'm sorry, did I misspronounce that?
That's okay. I was going to correct you the other night.
Give me until, in the night.
So again, this is, this is working in conjunction with what the town voted in Article seventy of twenty twenty-three, the sunset clause. So we're trying to clean up a lot of these items that are on the books. So the first part is municipal appropriations that have to be closed, and they will be going into water fund, general fund, building stabilization fund, building stabilization fund, general fund, and general fund. When we close out these articles, the funding, if it's not being reallocated, has to go back to the fund of which it was taken from. Second part of this article, which is a combined article, is the CPA. They have some articles that will be applying to borrowing balance, borrowing balance, return to CPA Historical Reserve Fund, return to the CPA Historical Reserve Fund. And again, where the money comes from, it has to go back to unless it's reallocated out. Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Director Elizabeth Zaleski.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, at this time, we're going to have technical questions. Any technical questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Pro and con debate. Seeing none, we're going to move on to voting. This is going to be simple majority again. There's no borrowing here. Are we ready? Please vote now, one, two, or three. All right, Article fourteen, Prior Appropriations Closeouts on the Article seventy, ATM twenty twenty-three. Passes one thirty-seven years, three no, one abstention. Thank you all for voting. I declare that a vote. All right, let's move on to Article fifteen. That appears in the books on page twenty-six. I'll give you all a moment to turn to that page. The motion was actually on the table, and it's the same motion that you see in the book here, the proposed motion. So the one and the same. Okay, making this motion would be Melissa Lynch. Melissa, could you identify yourself and what precinct you're from?
Sure. Melissa Lynch, precinct three. To see if the town will move to request that the select board schedule an election to be held as may be deemed appropriate to the select board so that the town may vote whether to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, Proposition Two and a Half, relative to the South Elementary School Project, approved in Article one of the twenty twenty-four Special Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you.
Point of procedure?
No, excuse me. No, no, excuse me. Hold on. I'm right in the middle. I need a motion, a second. I need a second. Who wants a second then? What's your first name? Denise? All right, seconded by Denise Walsh for the record. All right, first going to have the reports. Finance Committee Report, please, Mr. Von Anokian.
Finance Committee voted eleven to two to two to refer Article fifteen to town meeting.
Thank you. Municipal Operations, Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three, Chair of Municipal Operations, which voted five to zero to recommend Article fifteen to town meeting for approval.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Laurie, what did you, what was your?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
What was your point?
Point of procedure is basically how many votes are needed in order to pass the article?
That's not a point of procedure right now.
What, when would it be revealed? When are, all right, point of order then?
Hang on a minute, sir. We'll get to that, okay? Right now, we don't need to know that. We get to that, all right? Mr. Town Council probably explained a little bit later, but let's hear the presentation first. Could you identify yourself, please, Laurie?
Lori Jakes, precinct three, six error circle. My name is Lori Jakes, and I'm a Stoughton resident, a taxpayer, a parent of two daughters who attend South Elementary School. My daughter Libby is in fourth grade and Sydney is in first grade. I have served as the president of the South Elementary School PTO and continue to be active and involved in that community. I want to state upfront that I am not a member of the school building committee, nor have I ever been involved in the design process for the new school other than to attend a couple of info sessions about the project. I'm just a volunteer who said yes and one hundred percent supports this project. I'm here this evening to ask town meeting, who voted overwhelmingly to support the new elementary school project just last spring, to reaffirm their commitment and demonstrate to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, that Stoughton will support this project. I listened to the meetings and discussions following the June vote, and I brought this petition because it was clear without reaffirmation, it's quite possible this town won't see MSBA support for the elementary school or any other school project in the foreseeable future. As the petitioner, I represent more than twenty-four hundred Stoughton residents and taxpayers who, to date, have signed this petition. That number continues to grow every day with the support of many individuals. But tonight is not really about me or any of us who are here in support of the project. By the time the new school is built, most of us will no longer have elementary school-aged children. This request is really about the future of elementary education for all Stoughton families and the value of education to our community. South Elementary School was built in nineteen fifty-eight, and I'm sure at the time it was a first-class facility. An addition in nineteen sixty-seven included eight more classrooms, a library, and a gymnasium. In the last fifty-seven years, there have only been six renovations to the building. The capacity for this building stands at approximately two hundred and twenty-five students, without space for many of the support services students need and use today. For context, the enrollment at the end of last school year was three hundred seventeen, far beyond the school's original design. So in its current state, South Elementary School is overcrowded and in dire condition. There is no library, as it has been turned into classrooms. Music class happens on the stage in the cafeteria, sometimes during lunch. The band may also take place in that stage outside the building or in the hallways. Storage closets have been transitioned into office spaces. So closets that once held art supplies are now where teachers beat with students. The current school was built and renovated prior to the Americans with Disabilities Act and is therefore not ADA compliant. That is obvious if, when you walk in the building, you notice right away there's two very steep ramps that someone in a wheelchair would need to maneuver to get from one floor to the next. There is also a lift between floors and that exits into a classroom that a student with mobility issues or in a wheelchair would need to use to move throughout the building. Imagine being that student who has to disrupt a class anytime they need to go somewhere. When it rains, you can expect to walk through the school and see rain coming in through the ceiling or the plexiglass windows into many of the classrooms and the gym. Imagine being a third grader who walks into school on the first day of MCAS into their classroom and learns that they can't take the test at their desk because it was raining and there is water leaking through the light fixture onto the desk. Third grade is when MCAs are taken for the first time, and it can be very stressful for an eight-year-old. No doubt this affected the student and how they performed. There is asbestos in the floor tiles and most likely mold throughout. Yes, there have been assurances that the air quality has been tested and is within appropriate limits, but I'm not sure I believe this, especially as I continue to hear from parents how their child's asthma acts up when they are at school. And the biggest concern of all, especially in this day and age, is that South Elementary School lacks proper security. These are just a few examples of what is currently wrong with the school. The proposed school design would fix these issues and allow for an improved educational experience for our children. The fact that people continue to refer to it as one of the seven wonders of the world when they call it the Taj Mahal or a luxury resort when they say it's Mar-a-Lago is astonishing to me and, quite frankly, inappropriate. This school design is not extravagant, but is simply designed to meet the modern needs for education and security in Stoughton and in the twenty-first century and beyond, with the intention of lasting for at least the next fifty years and probably much longer. Moreover, the majority of the elements being described as extravagant have an educational function and are reimbursable by the MSBA, not paid for by the taxpayers. Elementary education today emphasizes STEM, project-based and collaborative learning, and face-to-face interaction. Things like breakout spaces, dedicated science labs, outdoor classroom space, and small group assembly are required components to meet the MSBA's goal in funding excellence in education. In twenty twenty-four, over twenty percent of our students are in some form of IUP and require support services that no one would have envisioned in a nineteen sixty-seven building. It would be in our best interest to take advantage of getting modern amenities for our students to thrive, using the state's money to do so. Further, if we are unable to secure a debt exclusion necessary to fund this project, we will lose an MSBA grant for over forty-seven million dollars, approximately forty-two percent of the total proposed cost of this project. So we would lose free money. The MSBA would take the money and give it to another town. We would then need to be invited back to submit another statement of interest. At the very least, it would be five years before this would happen, if at all. In that five years, construction costs will continue to rise, increasing the amount of money needed to construct a new building. And given the fact that we didn't support this now, there is no guarantee that the MSBA would ever invite us back, causing major ramifications to the future school building projects, including the O'Donnell Middle School. Finally, I'd like to take a moment to address the failed June eleventh vote. From the time the MSBA formalized their support of this project to the day of the vote, there was not enough time to get the facts out, and voters were not only misled, but were also ill-informed on the cost benefit and need for the project. Those in opposition of this project presented misinformation to the public. Among other items, this misinformation included a higher tax impact for taxpayers and also suggested that by voting no, taxes would not increase. Make no mistake, there is a cost in the very near future for Stoughton's elementary school building, and it is significant. The question is whether we want to take advantage of the money that the MSBA has already set aside for Stoughton or bear the cost without MSBA funding and regret the choice in future years when we inevitably learn that our patchwork solution didn't correct the problem. By not allowing a revote and moving forward with the current failed debt exclusion vote, again, we will lose forty-seven million dollars in funding. I ask you, is that a fiscally prudent decision? It also appears some people in town believe that we can build a new building within the budget using an MSBA model school. It is my understanding that the school building committee was required by the MSBA to look at these options, and based on the eighty-page educational program plan that was created, none of the MSBA model schools supported the educational needs for Stoughton elementary schools. Today, we have two options. Build a new consolidated elementary school with a grant from the MSBA, or the South School will close, requiring the redistricting of all students into the four remaining elementary schools that are already overcrowded, and placing modular classrooms at the Gibbons, DAW, and Hanson Schools to support the additional three hundred-plus students currently attending South School. And to clarify, all students may end up in the modulators, not just South students. This option is not a scare tactic. It is a fact. It creates a subpar solution with substantial costs in upwards of thirty million dollars for a solution that lasts only ten years. And the costs will be fully funded by the taxpayers. I'm here tonight not just as a parent, but also as a citizen who invested in this town, built a family here, and wants nothing more than for Stoughton to flourish. I moved to Stoughton eleven years ago, before I had children, but knowing one day that my children would be educated in the Stoughton Public School system because I believe in and support public education. If I had to make the same choice for my family today, knowing that modular classrooms and townwide busing was the future of education here, I would think twice. For someone weighing the decision as I was eleven years ago, it shows limited value of education. The choices by families on whether or not to invest in Stoughton in the future depend on the choices this community will make today. If we decide not to move forward with building a new school, I have no doubt that Stoughton will become less desirable choice for families, affecting property values and resulting in less people who will invest in the town. It is our civic duty, whether we have children in the school system or not, to ensure that all children in Stoughton have the best educational experience that we can offer them, including a safe and healthy building. That is currently not happening at South. In closing, I would ask each of you if it is fair to pass this problem on to future generations in the way that it has become our problem to deal with today. I have spoken to many people about this project over the last couple of months, and those who know and/or attended South School will tell me it's been decades that something should have been done. Let's set an example for our children, who will be the next generation responsible for Stoughton. I think now is the time for us to come together as a community and rectify this problem. If you don't want to do this for our children, then do this for our town. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, before I take technical questions, Town Council would like to add a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to address the meeting very briefly because this is a little bit of an unusual petition question before the meeting. And I wanted to just say a few words on what it is and what it is not. And I believe the speaker, I don't mean to misquote you, I hope I get this right, used the phrase reaffirm the town's commitment. And so what this is not is an appropriation. It's not an appropriation. It's not a debt exclusion. It's not authorization or a mandate to set an election date. It's advisory. It's to reaffirm the town's commitment. So those are steps, the election and appropriation, there's no dollar figure associated with this, are steps I would have to take in the future. Those are actions that would have to be taken by this body and others at another time. So this is advisory in nature. It's instructional to a certain extent. And as you heard the presenter say, to reaffirm the town's commitment. So it's to see if it is the will of this meeting to continue with the democratic process that's related to this project. So there are other steps that would occur in the future, if that's the will of this town's meeting, this town meeting to pursue. But for tonight's vote, there's no appropriation, there's no debt exclusion. So it's not a two-thirds quantum for the vote. It's a majority, simple majority vote, to get the will of the meeting on an advisory vote as to whether or not to continue on with this process. So thank you for that time. I hope that clarifies kind of what is the question in front of you this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's make it, if it's a point of order, otherwise I'm going to rule you out of order.
Okay, it's a point of order then. So in the proposed motion, it says interest in principal on borrowing. So I, I'm curious as to how that doesn't have financial implications because principal and interest on borrowing is absolutely a financial area.
I'll defer the Town Council on that.
No, I understand that. So if I understand the speaker's question correctly, is why isn't this a financial article? It is. It concerns costs. It concerns the finances related to the project. But you're not voting on an appropriation. This is not, there's no dollar figure here for you to prove. In the future, there may be, and there may be another article in front of you. This is a referendum on whether or not the town wants to continue the process of considering an appropriation, which may be subject to a debt exclusion in the future. This, in and of itself, is not that appropriation or debt exclusion. It's whether or not the town wants to continue with the democratic process to consider that at a future time.
Okay, that clears it up.
Look, I just wanted to make reference that it's referring to Article one from the twenty twenty-four election, which is absolutely a borrowing financial matter. So I don't understand, and I just want a clarification, how this is even considered not to be a borrowing article. This is implied a borrowing article.
All right, let me ask Town Council if he could clarify that. All right, let me ask Town Council if he could clarify that, if it's possible.
Well, let me add one more point that I didn't make before, because I didn't want to make it overly technical. But under the Proposition 2 1/2, Statute 5921(c), Subsection m, the appropriation that this town meeting voted in May has expired. It was a special within an annual. The election needs to pass that debt exclusion within 90 days of the appropriation. That vote's expired. And so we can't relate this back to a May vote that included an appropriation that's now expired. And so that's why this is not that. It doesn't relate back, it doesn't tether it to the May vote. So sorry for getting a little hyper-technical there, but this is not to sort of resurrect that. That doesn't continue on, there'd have to be a separate vote.
Thank you, Mr. Town Council. Nope, nope, excuse me, excuse me. We're done with point of orders right now, because it's always going to be the same thing again. Let's go into technical questions. Does anybody have a technical question? Roberta, please identify yourself.
Is this working? Yeah.
I just want to be clear, the Town Council says it's a referendum, okay? A referendum. All right, so go ahead, Roberta, identify yourself again.
Roberta Habeck, Precinct 7. The MSB has strict guidelines of what a motion, an article, has to read, has to state. And you just said that after 90 days, we're null and void. I can read the information, word by word, that the town and the building committee, not a civilian, is supposed to fill out for this motion, for this motion, M-Warren article. It's referenced, but it's not in there. It's not a valid motion acceptable by the MSBA.
I'll get a ruling from Town Council whether it's a valid motion or not.
I can bring up the paperwork if you'd like to see it.
No, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Moderator, again, through you to the Speaker, that's actually confirming what I just said, that this is not the MSBA appropriation or debt exclusion vote. This is a referendum on whether to continue the process. And as I said before, actions would have to come later, an appropriation, an election, a debt exclusion, those are actions that would have to be taken later, and the reason they'd have to be taken later is because we would need to comply with all the standards you just mentioned. That is not this. This is a referendum on the question of whether to continue the process. A referendum is a perfectly legal advisory, non-binding vote the town meeting can take. So in that context, this is a legal article, and it's a legal motion. It just does not have the effect of appropriating money or sending a question to the ballot. That's a question you would have to answer some other time.
Okay, for my second question.
Sure.
So when will we then see the correct wording for this? When will this, if this passes tonight, when will we see this come before us again? The actual required wording?
I can't answer that, could I? Would anybody be able to answer that? Sure, or Mr. Cavy?
So this would then, if this is, if the will of this body is for the Select Board to examine this question, then we'll have to deliberate on that. And, you know, we haven't spoken about it, we haven't met on this, this project has not been the subject of a single Select Board meeting, and so I couldn't give you an answer as to what the next steps are. You know, the Select Board could, you know, decide on its own that we're not going to move forward with the vote, even if this body decided to. We could decide that we are going to move forward with a vote, and that would require us to have an appropriation first, so we'd have to call a special town, another special town meeting, and we'd have to move forward with that. There might be other options I'm just not thinking of, but regardless, that is not the subject of the motion for tonight, but it will have to be a subject for some future town meeting vote.
Oh, no, thank you, because I just, like I said, I want it clarified when we would see this, if and when we would see this again. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, your questions. Next up, Mr. Feinberg, could you identify yourself, please?
Arnie Feinberg, Precinct 6. My question has got to do with the April 1st vote that, if this passes, our, this is through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Council. Can we have that vote if we don't have a special town meeting?
Mr. Town Council, go right ahead, if you can answer that.
I can, and the purely legal answer is that both of those boxes have to be checked. The town meeting vote to appropriate and authorize a debt exclusion, and it needs to pass at the ballot box. The statute actually doesn't require that they happen in a particular order. That being said, I would say 99 times out of 100, the town meeting vote comes first and authorizes the appropriation, subject to a debt exclusion question, and the election comes after.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. Mr. Juan Fox, identify yourself, please, to the board.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. So I'm to understand that the Select Board does not have free rein to overrule an election that we had in June and run it again in April, unless we have an additional special town meeting to okay that.
Is that your question?
Yeah, that's my question.
Okay, could we have clarification on that? Anybody?
I take that to be a legal question. Does the statute allow it? And so as a legal question, the statute allows the Board to set an election and call for an election if it sees fit to. Now, it still needs an appropriation from town meeting, so it's a common sense matter. Why would you hold an election if you don't have an appropriation to consider? So that's why I said a moment ago that 99 times out of 100, unless this body makes the appropriation subject to a ballot question, you typically would not see a ballot question. There's nothing to vote on at that point. Technically, you could do them in reverse order, it's possible. In the sort of theoretical sense, it's possible to hold the election first and have town meeting vote afterwards, but again, 99 times out of 100, you wouldn't.
My second question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
My second question is, so if the town meeting in May, which approved the article, that's not going to be considered the approval for an April vote? Is that true?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, you may, please.
Through you to the Speaker, it's just a matter of law. The town meeting vote happened at a special town meeting within the annual town meeting, and by law, it was only good for 90 days, so that's clocked out. And so we need a new appropriation, if that's the will of the town. But we can't rely upon that May appropriation any longer, that's expired.
Okay, thank you for your question. Next up is Mr. Paul Demuse, could you identify yourself, please, to the board?
Paul Demuse, Precinct 2. I was under the impression that at some point, there was going to be substantial cost savings and changes in the proposed school. I'm wondering when or if we're ever going to see that.
Okay, can anybody answer the gentleman's question?
So I am not a member of the school building committee, so I do not have the answer to that question, but Dr. Bayetta or Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the gentleman asking the question. Yes, the building committee will be looking at cost savings within this project. However, I want to be very clear, that has to be reviewed by the MSBA, and if they see that we are outside the scope of the educational plan, they will deny the changes that are being made. Just to be very clear, they hold the plan as the plan, and I'll give you a perfect example. Let's say you wanted to, and this is an example only, Mr. Demuse. Let's say we wanted to make the gym smaller and save X number of dollars. That's a no. That changes the educational plan of that building. Let's say we wanted to take care of, not do the fields outside, not a problem. We could potentially not have a cricket or tennis court or soccer. If we wanted to change the scope of the STEM lab, that would violate the educational program. They would say no. So we're in a very tight bind of how much we can take off that total amount of the project.
Okay. And my second question, what is the plan for the South School if, in fact, we do build this new school? Is that just going to be an eyesore to rot forever?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Speaker. The Stoughton School Committee and the Superintendent's Office is committed to closing two schools. The first school would be the South School, the second school would be the Jones School. Both schools will be closed, the Wilkins would become the preschool. Those two would then be turned over to the policymakers of the town, which are the Select Board, for the proper process of what would happen next. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question. As Moderator, I'm going to allow a little bit of latitude for everybody, because this is one of those debates that's far-reaching a little bit. So next up is, but I will try to bring you in if you go too far from the scope. Next up is Lisa Lyons. Please identify yourself.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So I have a couple of questions. I understand how everyone fails in the town. I believe we do need a new school. I think by now, everyone knows that the cost can be borne within the budget, and we can get, do it with either MSBA funds or not. My concern or question-
Is there a question, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, please get to it.
I would just like the latitude that you have been giving everybody else in that.
Well, yeah, but it got to the question. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, but-
You're making a statement before you get to the question.
That's correct, because I'm-
You're leading up to something?
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you.
But please get to it.
Okay, so we can, we as a town, we have near 30,000 or more now residents in town that we need to take care of and that we have capital projects for. Okay, I don't understand why parents haven't been up here, year after year, asking for savings for these projects. That being said, we can build a new school within the budget now, with all the money our chair of our Select Board has already said we have, okay, in a public forum, or we can wait and get the MSBA money, because I hear your point. But at the current price of this school, at a hundred-
Lisa, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you. I apologize, but I'm just waiting for the question.
Okay.
You've got to get to the question, or I'm going to rule you out of order.
At the current price-
You have five seconds, please. Get to your question.
At the current price of the school, okay, don't you find it exorbitant that it's not a coupon of $47 million at the exorbitant rate of $655 net to the taxpayers square foot versus all the other surrounding towns who can build an educated school within a $300 a square foot range? That's my question.
Excuse me, was someone talking back there? I didn't hear, I'm going to ask you to step out, please. Who did that? Just please step out of the room for a couple of minutes, although I'll have you removed if you speak up again. Thank you for understanding. Lisa, could you repeat that last question? Not the whole thing, but just to the question.
I got it, Bob. Okay, so I know you're concerned about the MSBA money, okay? And you've brought up in public forums that it's a coupon and it's free money. First of all, it's not free money, so the question is, it's taxpayer money. So the question is, if you're getting a coupon for 40-something million dollars and the price is exorbitant, it's not really a bargain. But if we could get you a new school within the range of, like the other schools, of $300 a square foot, meeting our educational plan, why have you said no to that more reasonably priced new school? Did that clarify it better, Bob?
It's a long-winded question, but yes, you got to the question.
Well, I get censored so much, Bob, I have to make a couple of points.
To Mr. Moderator, through you to the Speaker. So if the town media would indulge me for a couple of minutes in responding to the question. First of all, the MSBA has a very specific protocol for reimbursement. The building committee didn't come up with this, no one in this room came up with this. It goes the following way: All districts have a base rate of 31% reimbursement points, every district, everywhere. Then you take the community income factor, that is the district's per capita income as a percent of the statewide average per capita income. Add that number to the community property wealth factor, the district's per capita equalized property valuations as a percent of the statewide average per capita. Then add to that the community poverty factor, measured by the district's proportion of low-income students as defined by the federal eligibility law. MSBA then allows for extra incentive points if you become a regional school district, high-efficiency green school, best practices for routine and capital maintenance, overlay zoning, renovating, reuse, or establishing a maintenance trust, which can get you anywhere from 0 to 18 more points for that. Every community goes through that. Can't compare communities on the prior comment. You can't, based on the formula. The formula is specific to Stoughton, and if you're in Westwood, specific to Westwood, and if you're in New Bedford, specific to New Bedford. Point one. Point two. This district is attempting to save the taxpayers' long-term money and planning for schools. How so? We build a new school, move 600 students in there, close the current South School, close the Jones School, reuse the Wilkins School. You have no new elementary schools to build in this district for decades. At worst, you would be renovating or adding to buildings, at worst. Come visit the Hanson, come visit the Wilkins, which is actually in great shape, except for some federal money we're going after, or local money for HVAC. It has new roofs, new windows, new bathrooms, thank you. And the Hanson, Daw, and Gibbons are in fantastic shape. They're all considered Level 1 schools by the MSBA. The current South is a Level 3, lowest rating you can get. Truly, the district, through the town, is trying to save the taxpayers' money by not having to build any more elementary schools. Your next major project after this would be the O'Donnell Middle School, and get this, wait until you see that price tag. Because if you think this is big, wait until you see that price tag. That would be the remaining last major school project probably in my lifetime. That is true, being, planning the future, being fiscally conservative, and not kicking the can down the road. In the end, pay now, pay later. You're going to pay more later.
Okay, my second question, Bob.
All right, your second question, but you've got to ask the question. No more lead-in statements, otherwise I'm going to rule you out of order.
Well-
I'm going to rule Lisa a question, please.
Okay.
You're testing my patience.
Okay. Listen, we, this is a deliberative body, is it not? Is this a deliberative body or not?
It is, but this is the technical questions.
What?
You have to ask the question.
Right, I have a question.
Okay, I'll let you, I'll allow you to ask a question.
Well, thank you. Okay, so I just don't understand, nobody is suggesting kicking the can down the road. I don't think we should be rewarding government for making a poor decision on a school. The question is, is we have, we have a free cash, we have year-over-year new growth, why is this project, given what Dr. Bayetta just said, with regard to the, all the other capitals in the major O'Donnell Middle School project that is coming up, that we should absolutely be doing this South School within the budget with the money currently available? And we could do that now without the MSBA and take care of our students and all the taxpayers? It seems like people are not concerned, they're only concerned, to use the presenter's words previously, with the subset of the population. We are one town. Why is that?
Is that the question? Why is that?
No, you weren't listening, Bob.
I wasn't.
I know.
Long-winded. Okay, but thank you for your question.
Well, I'm taking my lead from other people, Bob.
All right, thank you. I don't believe so.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Dr. Bayetta.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know how we take a school project in the millions of dollars and put it- and put it into operational cost without cutting somewhere. It's that simple. Mr. Coulter and I, the elected officials on the School Committee and the Select Board, will have to make drastic decisions if we decide that we're going to put five million dollars, or, I think if I looked at it, if it was four percent and you're building this and you're putting into the operational budget, it's probably in the vicinity, I'll take a guess, but I'm not a mathematician, three to four-hundred thousand dollars a month anyways, in principal and interest. How does that go into an operational budget without cutting programming? With all due respect, I get the idea of being fiscally conservative. I do. But not at the cost of eliminating public services in the town. I live in this town, I care for it, I'm not, I just don't collect a check from you. I live here, I spend here, I like it here, I set my kids here. I should say kid, individual. So at the end of the day, I don't see, I'd like to see the math from the folks on the side that we can't afford it, say how you can put it into the operational.
It's not there.
It's not there, because you're utilizing a formula, sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, no cross debate, please.
Cross debate.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Beata. Thank you, Lisa Lyons. Next up, I have Karen Clipper, you still want to? Okay, Karen, thank you. Becca Marksen, you're up. Identify yourself, please.
Becca Marksen, Precinct Seven. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I actually have a question for the town manager regarding this.
All right, please ask the question, then we'll ask him the answer.
So my question is, if the body votes no, what services will be cut if we have to do modular units or anything else? What services to the taxpayers in town will be affected? Because we still have to do something over nothing.
Mr. Tom Adger, are you able to answer that?
Forgive me, Mr. Moderator, these are kind of back-of-the-napkin estimates on the answer to that question. Assuming the debt service for principal and interest on the school is somewhat close to the principal and interest on the modulators, let's call it the mean, four million dollars a year, principal and interest, let me give you some budget numbers that we're doing the budget this week, so they're right off the top of my head. That would be the equivalent in order to pay that inside the budget debt service of one-point-two million dollars for the public library, five-hundred thousand dollars for recreation, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the council on aging, eight-hundred thousand dollars for the VNA. If we closed all of those businesses, we'd still be a million short to meet the debt service, so that would likely come off of either educational programming, public safety, or both. That's what the impact would be if we tried to do this within the debt limit as opposed to debt exclusion, thank you. That would be the impact. The equivalent of closing one, two, three, four departments in substantially crippling education and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Do you have another question, Becca?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, I have John Inzavino next, or was it Brian Holmes, I'm sorry. He cut? John. Well, who wants to go, who wants to be polite? John Inzavino.
John Inzavino, Precinct Four. I just need to have something clarified, because I was under the impression that when this got voted down, there is a process that the MSBA allows that you can bring this back to a vote. And it was my understanding, the MSBA has granted the town of Stoughton an extraordinary extension to be able to do this in April. So I would just like to clarify whether we're extending what was voted and in fact is reaffirming the vote from May to put this back on to the ballot. Because it's my, it was my understanding, the Board of Selectmen have this authority to do this, regardless of what this body does, and regardless of the twenty-four-hundred signatures people already have signed onto the petition to have them do just that. So could somebody explain to me, if that extension was granted, did the ninety days run out, or did we get an extension that would allow this to just go forward?
Okay, let me get-
That's my one question.
Okay, hang on a second, John, that's above my pay grade, I'm going to see if we can get an answer for you, okay?
I figured you'd go where you had to go.
Right, okay. Who would like to answer that for us? Anybody want to step up?
It is a fact, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the, Mr. Inzavino, it is a fact that the MSBA, for the only second time in its history, has granted a community an extension after a loss of a vote. It is the longest extension ever provided by MSBA. It is the longest extension ever provided by MSBA. They've never gone down this road. There's a lot of asking about it and so on and so forth. So they have given the Building Committee, the town of Stoughton, until its spring election, April. No later. If there is not a ballot question prior to that, that's decided, we're done. They're not going to wait it till Labor, because they want to release these funds. If it goes to April and there's a positive vote, we build. If there isn't, we're done, we go to the back of the line. But the MSBA, in writing, has provided the Building Committee, the Town Manager, et cetera, the extension to go to the next local election in April. That's in writing.
So the only other question would be, if that's been extended, does that extend the ninety days that Mr. Winter had alluded to?
Mr. Winter, Town Council?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Speaker, two separate issues altogether. Whether or not the MSBA allows us to remain eligible for their program doesn't eliminate the need for us to do what we need to do at a local level in order to appropriate funds and schedule an election. Those are the things that we need to do, and those are the things that are under our control. What Dr. Beata, I believe, just indicated is that, as long as we're working towards that, they will give us the extension, allow that process to play out, and will consider us still eligible. That's their decision, that has nothing to do with what we do here. We still have to take care of this business.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Moving on, Brian Holmes, you're up next. Please identify yourself, please.
Thanks, Brian Holmes, Precinct Three. Through you to the Superintendent. Dr. Beata, what's the plan for everything else? And to provide you some context for that, you and I have discussed this, I've talked about this with petitioners for the, you know, bring it back. You discussed an OMS, the presenter discussed an OMS. Can you talk to town meeting just in a nutshell about what's the timetable for that? Is it going to be a two-hundred-million-dollar project? What kind of money is it going to cost to get the Wilkins up and ready to rehab? It's going to be leased out to preschool students, or whatever the plan is repurposing for that. I think it's fair, because you have people that are going to be voting on that school project and others in capital at a future town meeting, and there's probably taxpayers watching, that are worried about the taxes going up on this. So I just think it's a fair question to explain briefly as you can, what's the plan for everything else?
The current-
Dr. Beata, I'll allow that if you can kind of do it concisely in a nutshell.
Sure, Plan Eight, build a new building, close two buildings. Take the Jones School, preschool administration, move it to the Wilkins. Wilkins' number-one issue right now is the HVAC system. We're actually looking to put a project together for that. That's the key issue there, new roof, new windows, new bathrooms, the walls are great, electricity is running fine, et cetera. The Hanson, the Hanson, the Daw, and the Gibbons are in very good shape, two of them are in excellent shape, one is in very good shape, and those would be, in the future, renovation additions. We're talking a good twenty-plus years out, renovations, additions. Unless this increased enrollment continues to balloon, that would be a different discussion, because it would be based on enrollment needs, not the facility, not getting the proper repair, so on and so forth. The capital plan you're about to get is going to begin the process of taking monies through free cash as we can, through the town, as one, hopefully one capital plan, to start to target some of these things, so we don't have to go back for big projects, our editing of our elementary schools. Lastly, we got the high school coming off, this one's going on, there'll be a crossover. You're looking at probably somewhere around 2030 to 2032, putting a statement of interest in for the middle school. You're going to have to spend some money there in between there, for the record, but through capital. But you're taking a statement of interest, that's going to probably take three to five years before it's going out, because the number of school districts asking for statements of interest has ballooned since the last, to be quite honest, since COVID. So in brief, that's the plan, you're looking at a good ten years, well, thirty, we're in twenty-four, let's say twenty-five, you're looking at about six years out of an SOI, from there, three to five years, and then you've got to go through that whole process of what are we getting or not. You are right, Chief, about one thing. This is a two-hundred-million-dollar middle school project, at least.
Thank you, Dr. Beata.
Thank you for that comprehensive response. My second question. There was a document that is encyclopediatric in its size, that was done by Dick Fitzgerald and the Facilities Master Plan Committee, which is part of the reason why we are where we are, that that plan was marginalized, it was ignored by and large. Is there any discussion about using that, revisiting that, and using that as a guidepost or some sort of a plot plan to figure out where exactly the town needs to go for the schools and municipals? There's a lot to consider here.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Speaker, that is correct. In March of twenty-third, as, twenty-three, as I was coming on board, I was actually sitting in that meeting when it took place. The School Committee voted and took place and updated the Facilities Master Plan. We're currently using that master plan as part of all of looking at these buildings. Added to that would be the capital plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you. Okay, next up for Speaker is Joanna Rosenblatt. Please identify yourself, please.
Thank you, Joanna Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to ask, I know when I was in Finance Committee, I had mentioned about us not being, I mean, how much it would cost to do renovations. And I was told by several people prior in Finance Committee that no renovations were ever discussed or ever talked about. I don't know why, but I know that they also said that you have to go with thirty percent of the assessed value, and then the ADA situation kicks in. How old is the assessment of the school? And that's all I wanted to know.
Of the South School, you're saying? Would anybody be able to answer that for us?
I believe it's either 2021 or 2022, I don't have that in front of me, but it's one of the two years.
Thank you.
And renovation of the South School was absolutely discussed during the South, the Building Committee, that was essential part of the process, but it was considered a base repair, which is literally just fixing things that are broken, as well as an addition renovation for both 225, the current enrollment, and 515, which would be an expanded enrollment. In other words, a consolidated South School. Those are actually discussed, the addition renovation of the South Project, the Preferred Schematic Report that we submitted to the MSBA, the seventy-eight-point-seven million dollars for additional renovation cost for that building.
Okay, but what I was referring to was the fact that had renovations been going on way back when, then we wouldn't be in this position, that's what I was trying to say.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
No statements on that, okay?
Mr. Moderator, through you. The Building Committee dated to the town of Stoughton from the MSBA online, October eighteenth, 2023, we reviewed eleven iterations of this project, including renovation addition, at two-hundred-and-twenty-five students and three-hundred students, and then the biggest school. There were eleven different discussions by the then-Building Committee, this is before I came on, and then when I came on. We looked at all of those things during that time. Eleven different iterations were looked at, it came down to taking a look at the best option long-term. That is when the Wilkins School discussions also started to take place. An idea that I think works for the community, so that we're not building buildings of three-hundred kids year after year. Part two of that, if you look at the MSBA, sixty percent of the schools that are approved right now for elementary new building are actually consolidated schools.
Okay, but I was referring to like thirty, forty years ago, not recently.
Like you, I wish, I hope I was thirty years younger today.
All right, you asked a second question, Dr. Beata answered it, so we're going to move on, thank you both. Pat Colburn, I do have, I do have a list of people, we'll get to everybody, I know everybody's standing here patiently, we appreciate that. But people are before you, too. We have the clerks making notes, everybody's in a queue here, so please be patient, all right? Thank you. Pat Colburn, please go ahead.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I just need to verify the timeline, because I thought I heard some things tonight that were new to me. So if somebody could just verify if I have this correct, if not, please straighten me out. If we vote yes tonight, it goes to the Board, the Select Board. It's totally up to them whether they want to go forward or not. If they vote yes, will they then write an article with an appropriation in it and then hold a special town meeting at which we vote yes, then it will go on the ballot in April? Is that the process? Because at first I thought, when we were talking about the special, we were talking about the special within the annual, but that's after the election. So do I have that timeline correct?
Who would like to answer that for her? Mr. Kavy?
Yeah, so there are a couple of different options, and as I said, we haven't deliberated on it, this has not been a topic of our, of any of our conversations. But my understanding, and part of this I'm going to defer to Town Council, on, but the major milestones are, one is that, you know, we have an extension from the MSBA's, you know, offer of their portion of the financing through, I think, April fifth, so that would, I think our town election is April first. And so that's more or less what they're, you know, that's our cutoff date for when we would be able to access that funding. Additionally, any appropriation the town meeting agrees to will, still has a ninety-day expiration date, so it's got to be within ninety days of that cutoff time that we have. So that would be, you know, if we're going to have a special, it would probably be sometime in January or February. And I'm just, I'm throwing out numbers, I don't, nobody's said anything or agreed to anything. But as I, as Town Council mentioned earlier, there is actually also an additional potential option of having the vote first and then the appropriation second, and people may like that or not like that. I don't, you know, that's just, whether you like it or not, that is, you know, another option. But, so there's, as I said, nobody's deliberated, nobody's given any opinions on any of these things. I don't know what people like or don't like, and so we'll have to just go through that process. But I will ask, Mr. Winter, do I more or less lay out what our options are and what the general timeline looks like?
Thank you, Steve Kavy. Pat Colburn, you got one?
I believe yes, Mr. Winter.
Yeah, did you want me to?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you sound like an attorney, so I just, I thought we were all wrapped up there, I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Kavy did a fantastic job. So I think that statement was very accurate, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting. So there are essentially three boxes that need to be checked, and although, I can't really give any specifics, because it hasn't been discussed by the Board yet, in terms of how mechanically any of this would be done and when it would be done. But the three boxes are what Chairman Kavy just identified. There needs to be an appropriation, that can only happen at a town meeting, so there would need to be a special town meeting. The Board would have to consider and then establish a date for an election, that's two. There are certain time periods that are associated with all of these things. Takes thirty-five days before the election can take place after it's called. Appropriation's only good for ninety days, and we have an April first cutoff to make the MSBA requirements fulfilled. So all three of those boxes have to be checked, MSBA, appropriation, ballot question. So that would all have to happen within that time period.
And if I may, Mr. Moderator, my second question is just a quick follow-up.
Sure.
Would the Select Board be the ones to write that article for the appropriation? Or would you be looking for someone else to present that article? I mean, I know you have to call the special, but who will actually write that article? Who do we need to lobby if this goes through?
Mr. Kavy?
I'll answer that to the best of my ability. You know, I've seen two of these so far, with the high school and with our last vote. And as I recall, the motions themselves were drafted by our Bond Counsel, our Town Counsel, and I think also with the South, with the Building Committee's involvement. It's not something the Select Board, I mean, we wouldn't be necessarily writing it. And we would be inserting it into, into, into a warrant, but we wouldn't be writing it. I think that the language, you know, in order for it to really get, have few problems, requires a number of attorneys from a number of different interest groups to make sure that everything, all the Ts are crossed, Is dotted. So I believe that, as to who's actually puts pen to paper, it's probably collaboration between the schools, the Select Board, our attorneys, Bond Counsel, and there might be other people involved as well, similar to other, similar measures.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you both very much. Next, moving on, Mr. Robert Kirby, please identify yourself.
Robert Kirby, Precinct Six. I have two questions that probably would be directed towards our Council, through you, Mr. Moderator. The first is, isn't there a bylaw that says that if the Town Committee votes down a particular article, that it cannot be revoted on for two years? And I understand, this is a petitioned article, so it doesn't apply in this instance, but if the former- But if the former article is re-presented, and albeit it could be packaged a little differently, but if it's fundamentally the same, doesn't, irrespective of whether there is a new vote by the town at large, doesn't it fall under that two-year limitation?
Town council, please go ahead. Answer that if you can.
So I think you're referring to what we call a repetitive petition restriction. So that occurs in state law for things like zoning. I'm not aware of any limitation within the charter or the bylaws that would affect any kind of capital, any kind of appropriation article. And in any event, there's, as Chairman Kaby just mentioned, there's a couple of ways that this article could come into being. One's petitioned, and so there'd be no restriction on a petitioned article in any event.
Okay. And so my second question is that if this presumably went to a vote at large in the town, and then there's another special town meeting either before or after, however that timeline works out, and all was approved in every facet, and the MSBA actually, you know, agrees to fund it and all that, does the full value of this project, $114 million, does the liability for that fall to the town of Stoughton if, for example, the state reneged and didn't come up and actually fund what they said they would promise to because of their own fiscal insolvency, or whatever problems would happen at the state level? I know they're short funded on several commitments as we speak. They're $455 million short on their emergency shelter funding. So, I mean, there's things at the state level that are problematic. If they reneged on their promise to fund us for the 40-plus million dollars, would we be fully liable to that note that we have assumed irrespective of the town, of the state's failure?
Mr. Town Council, would you be able to answer that one?
I might be able to start, but others from our financial team might want to add a comment after what I'm about to say, which is, I think you have to get back, Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, of course.
Sure.
I think you have to get back to just the structure of how this actually plays out. So the town meeting votes and the ballot question vote are authorizations. No money actually gets borrowed. And so those authorizations just give us the ability to go through the process to eventually borrow that money. But no borrowing occurs, no liability attaches, you know, on April 1st, for example, just to pick a hypothetical date. And so that process plays out. And so unless and until all those moving pieces that you just described aligned, then the board and the other stakeholders in this process wouldn't go out and actually incur any of those liabilities unless it were financially proven to do so. So the process, that part that you're describing happens at the end, not at the beginning. These parts are just authorizations to allow those other steps later to occur. So that's my town council version of that. If there are others here who understand that mechanism with the MSBA or the financial mechanism who want to comment, I'd welcome those as well.
Would anybody on the table here like to comment? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Dr. Biata, did you want to?
Yeah, just for, just for details, the MSBA Board of Directors has voted the actual amount of up to, to the town of Stoughton. That's the reason why we were allowed to then go forward to an actual vote. Without that, there is no vote.
Thank you, Dr. Biata. All right, next up is Marina Ryats. You're up next. You're on the list. Mr. Rock, you're on the list, but you're after Marina.
I've been standing here.
I've been standing here too, sir.
For about half hour. Well, I have bad knees, or fake knees.
Okay, Marina, you were here. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Marina Ryats, Precinct 7. I just want to remind that MSBA portion is only 40% of the total cost. So the total cost is $114 million, which is more than extravagant price. So I have a question. Stoughton has a four-years capital plan. So during the feasibility study, the price was well-known, but it's not included in the capital plan. Why?
Is there anybody can answer that, please?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You are correct. The municipal side of your town government has a revolving four-year capital plan. That capital plan is for municipal operations, municipal buildings, municipal activities. It does not include the school department. The superintendent and I have met several times. We have agreed that through the investment they're making on their capital plan, we will be merging the two of them into a singular capital plan by July of 2026. Thank you.
Okay.
You have another question?
Yes, another question. So it was mentioned by Select Board Chair, Mr. Kaby, that Stoughton has the money, that we're not broke. So my question is, if we're not broke, and we have the money, we have plenty in free cash, so why we need, then to me, it sounds like that the difference between the MSBA 47 millions and, so at $114 million, the total price of this school can be covered within the budget. Why are you trying to push the 67 millions on taxpayers?
Mr. Kaby, if you could answer that, or Dr.?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you. So there's a difference between not being broke and having an infinite amount of money. And I think that's what we're talking about here, is that we, that we are able to, we're doing well as a town financially, and we'll see a lot of these numbers becoming much more clear to us, and then also part of the public presentations, the people are aware of where we stand financially. But what we are not able to do is fit four or five million dollars into our operating budget at this point. But I wouldn't say that that is not the same as being broke. I think that we are able to fund our operations effectively. We have, we're gonna have, we've done well with our capital projects. We're moving more towards the use of free cash for capital projects and away from borrowing for some of the smaller ones. I think we even saw that at our last town meeting, where we were emphasizing the use of free cash for some of our smaller borrowing articles, where we may have in the past for cruisers borrowed. We're not doing that any longer. And that is, that's a sign that we're heading in a very healthy direction. But financing an elementary school is something that we wouldn't be able to do inside the budget without significant cuts to all other services.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. Mr. Coulter, do you want to add something?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope I can further elaborate on the chairman's response. Let's assume for a second we have $5 million in free cash. In the budget guidelines that were provided to us from the select board in the middle of October, we're building a budget, Mark and I and Biz are building a budget, where we're assuming $5 million in free cash. All of that money will be used to support the capital plan so as to avoid further debt. So it's not like that money is, is not going to be well utilized. It's to avoid debt for trucks, for equipment, for fire trucks, for streets, parks, things like that. Now, in addition, the select board have given us specific guidance to make deposits and investment in reserve accounts. Our finances are getting better every year, starting two years ago, three years ago. Those investments will be in capital equipment, so we're not always borrowing money. Those investments will be in the reserve fund, which would, the legislative body have considerably increased over the past two years or longer. So that money, the legislative body, has used to do debt avoidance. So if we use that cash flow to pay for the debt service, so within the budget, as opposed to a debt exclusion, then other money will be borrowed to buy, for instance, a $2 million ladder truck for the fire department. They don't have a ladder truck right now. So it's where we want to spend our money. But the overall strategy is debt avoidance and increased savings. That's the guidance the board has given us from a policy perspective. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Thank you. Thank you, Marina.
Can I say?
You're all set. We had you two questions. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Next up, Mr. Rock, you're up.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
John Rock, Precinct 3. And this question isn't to the lawyer, although I love lawyers, except when I pay for them. This question, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Dr. Biata. As I understand it, the capacity of the new consolidated school would be about 600 students. And would that solve the overcrowding issue currently and meet the, and for the foreseeable future, and meet the educational needs of our elementary school students?
Yeah, it's a great question. Thank you. So through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker. The fact of the matter is, we're a growing community. And you can plan, you can do anything that you want, but at the end of the day, MSBA really controls the size of what the building can or cannot be. In this particular case, they actually grew it from 515 to 600. So we have a good manageable new building. Added to that, do not forget that this district is redistricting as part of that. So where students currently are may not be where they actually end up when the building actually opens up. I can't speak to what's gonna happen by the time this building opens up. We're up 56 students this year, if I remember the number correctly, 53 or 56 students this year alone. We've been seeing numbers between 50 and 100 every single year for the last two years that I've been here. And prior to that, we started to see growth. But the MSBA controls the size of what the final enrollment would be, reminding ourselves that we are in 2024, if this was to pass in 2025, you're not doing anything until '26 because you get a permit and everything else. You're not opening this building probably until '29, if not later.
Thank you. And I have a second question.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay?
No, you waited your turn. So go ahead, Mr. Rock.
To you, Mr. Moderator, to the town manager. Is it true that based on current interest rates, the cost to an average taxpayer with a home assessed at about $500,000 a year is, would be approximately $305 a year, or about $75 a quarter, or about 84 cents a day?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Coulter.
If you think I'm gonna answer it that precisely, you're crazy. John, that is exactly what our bond council has advised us, exactly as you stated.
Okay. Well, I did break it down today, and I can give you a week or whatever, but anyways, thank you very much.
All right, thank you both. Next up is David Laurie. Please identify yourself, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct 6. So I just need a little bit of time to kind of give context.
Questions only.
Just a little bit, just a little bit. So.
Excuse me, the rest of the crowd here, please. I can control. It's my job. Now, you, I mean, if you want to give me a raise, I'll stay even longer. But, Mr. Laurie, you can ask a question.
It won't be a comment. It's just gonna give context. There was, 20 years ago, 20 years ago, the town went into what's called a tax, a TIF, it went into a tax increment financing program to get our water connection. And it did so because it wanted to avoid doing an override, and it was able to take funds from private enterprises and move it into a water project over a 20-year note. My question is, in parallel to the building committee putting this project together, we also had another project in the pipeline, and we heard numbers as high as four or five million dollars of new growth coming into the town, starting in 2025. So my question is really about, since that money has not made its way into our budget, has anybody looked at putting a TIF together with the Logistics Park to bring that revenue into the south school to avoid an override?
Can anybody answer that?
Now, through you, Mr. Moderator. The direct question is, no, we haven't considered that. Logistics Park is gonna be made up of several businesses. It's not one business. It's several businesses. So in order to do that, it's a new model for me, first of all, Dave. But in order to do that, we'd be negotiating with several parties, not one organization. There are several, three large buildings going up there. And within those three large buildings, there are multiple smaller businesses that will be built into those larger businesses. You are correct that our economic development is substantially growing. So we do believe that we will have, we don't have it yet, but we'll have a very impressive new growth number for town meeting in the spring. But we clearly can't commit money that hasn't yet come in yet. We have to deal with what we know right now. Thank you.
So my second question through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Yep.
Is, we have seen through.
We have to get to the question.
Mr. Moderator.
I don't want to, I don't, Mr. Laurie.
I promise this is a question.
Let me, let me, let me respond. You need to ask the question. No lead-in statement, please.
I'm trying to explain the question. The question is.
Are these people intelligent enough? They don't need any leader.
Can the town today move the program that's coming in with the Logistics Park as a portion of what's coming? In other words, can you reduce the amount of override in order, just like we've experienced, where you can split between override and municipal debt service? Can a number be established to offset the hit that's gonna come through as a debt exclusion? Can we cushion that with any portion of new growth that hasn't been committed to our operating budget yet?
Mr. Coulter, I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe the ship has sailed when we talk about Logistics Park. It's permitted. It's under construction. Negotiations have ended. Construction has begun. More importantly, and I wish Biz was here, but to those of you who want to know where Biz is, she's been sick for two straight days through budget sessions. So when we finished the financial part, I asked her to go home and go to bed. She's been very sick. I think the second answer to that question is a logistical question. I think Ron and Town Council would be best qualified to answer, and that is, we can't earmark to a specific account. That money would have to go into the general fund. It always has to go through the general fund first, I believe. Thank you.
Did you want to clarify anything, Mr.? Okay. Town council said that is correct. Thank you, Mr. Coulter. All right. Next up, we have Eric Coleman. Just a note before you start, Eric. We're gonna finish town meeting tonight, okay? So I can promise you that. If we have to move a little faster, we will. But Eric Coleman, you're up.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. This is a referendum question, we're told. This is new to me as a town meeting member. So my question is, what does a no vote do? What does a yes vote do?
Who would like to answer that?
Yeah.
Mr. Kaby?
Yeah, so if you vote no, then this body is not asking for the select board to go forward with and try to find the path forward for this school. And the money that is available from the MSBA will likely expire. And then, as I've understood from the, and I don't want to misquote the superintendent or anybody from the schools, my understanding is that a no vote will lead to the south school closing, children being redistributed to the remaining four schools, elementary schools, and modulars put in their place at a cost that would be, once again, this is my understanding, it's just coming from listening to other people speak, will be roughly the same as if, maybe even more than if we voted yes. If, so that's the no. My understanding is if we vote yes, then it goes to the select board to decide what our next course of action will be. There's a number of options, and I'm not, since we've never discussed it, so I can't say how anybody thinks about anything. But the options that exist are, we do nothing, and everything I've described happens anyway, even if this body votes yes.
So if we vote no, you can't do anything?
Then that's it. This is, this is, this is dead. And we'll see you all in five to seven years for the next project.
Dr. Biata, did you want, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaby, you're all set? Okay, Dr. Biata, if you want to add something today?
Sure. Just to let you know, what would happen with a no vote tonight is that the building committee would come together. building committee would come together, the building committee would inform the MSBA that we are out of the project. We are done.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Baeta. Next up, Becca, did you have one more question?
One more.
Okay, you got one more.
Becca Marks, Precinct 7. Again, through you, Mr. Moderator, to either town manager or somebody. For seniors that are concerned about any tax increases, are there any programs or anything to help them, for them to be able to vote for this, knowing that it won't hurt them?
Would anybody be able to answer that? Mr. Coulter?
It's amazing the question came up. This was a one-hour discussion in Budget Deliberations today. We looked up the answer to that very question because we're trying to calculate projected revenues for the fiscal '26 budget, which begins July 1st. And we raised the question among the group and to Biz, what would be the impact if the town citizens take advantage of Mass. General Law 59, Clause 41A? And so we printed it this afternoon, coincidentally. We went to the Bible for municipal governments. This provides the Godrails and the guidelines for everything we do in municipal finance. So we printed this copy in direct response to your question, Becca. Cities and towns may give property tax exemptions to some individuals as defined by state law. An exemption discharges the taxpayer from the legal obligation to pay all or a part of the tax assessed for the fiscal year. Exemptions are found in various clauses throughout Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A. And I'll read in part two sentences. Taxpayers who qualify for personal exemptions under other clauses in, under Mass. General Law, for example, for seniors, disabled veterans, blind persons, or surviving spouses, may defer all or part of the balance of their reduced taxes until future years when the house is sold or the homeowner passes away. So the answer to your question, Becca, this is a state law that's enumerated by DOR, which are the guidelines and the, and the Godrails that we use. And the statute, the Mass. General Law, is very clear. That program is already in place in Stoughton. What it would require, if you read further in the law, is that the selectmen would create a policy regarding eligibility, not for your right to do it, but what is the minimum, or the maximum income? What is the age limit would be 65? What is the condition of their financial status? So it's not an automatic, but those who are eligible and truly in need have absolutely a resource for deferring their taxes until a time so that they're not using money for medicine and food and heat to pay for any of their property taxes. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Point of information?
Thank you both. Who's asking?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3.
Yes.
To supplement what was just said, Massachusetts has a senior property tax circuit breaker. If you're 65, you can get up to $2,590 a year refunded. You have to file a Massachusetts tax report. A lot of seniors don't because Massachusetts doesn't tax pensions or Social Security. So, I mean, it's a little extra cost. I spent, I spent 70 bucks, and I got $2,590. That's the limit right now. It goes up a little every year. So there's more than one option. You don't have to be blind or a disabled veteran. Sir, I, I mean, I don't have to prove I'm disabled. It's just, it's just called the Senior Property Tax Circuit Breaker. Obviously, if I made up $1 million a year, I probably wouldn't qualify. But I think the average senior in Stoughton who's living on a pension or Social Security would.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. Okay, moving on. Karen Clip, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, Karen Clip, Precinct 8. This question is directed to the chairman of the building committee. If you would humor me and answer my question. Would you like to go to the microphone, please? Sir, why did your committee design a building to be greater than the existing grade schools that do meet the standards?
Not sure I understand your question. Greater than the schools that meet the...
The superintendent told us that we have three schools that are in A1 condition, and this new school will be far superior to the other grade schools. Why wasn't it made equal to the other grade schools if they already meet the standards?
He would, well, I think, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Dr. Baeta, he was talking about the, MSBA has a grade, a 1 through 4 grade assessing the conditions of all schools across the Commonwealth. In Stoughton, the South School is now at a 4, 3, and all the other schools are graded at 1. They're actually redoing that right now. It was done, the last one was done in 2016, I think. So they're redoing their statewide assessment. We might get a downgrade for one or more of our schools, I don't know. But as of 2016, those were the grades. If the question is, why did we design something that is over a standard building design? I'm not sure, I, I'm sorry, Karen, it's me, not you.
Why should one grade school be different than the others?
Okay. Well, so this one will be new, for sure, but we also, we're not building in a vacuum. We're building per a standard that MSBA sets. The key to unlocking $47 million is that we build in accordance with their regulations, which means meeting specs for certain class size, meeting certain design components, getting the MSBA's feasibility study subcommittee to look at our building and sign off on the design. So we have to go through these processes. Once we do that and they approve of it, that's the building we have. Whether that's a different standard than what we have existing, it's just the nature of new versus old.
And if we vote yes tonight, will the building committee, if we, if we vote yes tonight, will the building committee go back and revisit and maybe downsize the project? So people who voted no might change their mind and vote yes?
No, if we, so, Dr. Baeta mentioned, this, the extension that we received from MSBA through April, unprecedented, never been seen before. The only one that's comparable close is in Carver, and they were allowed an extension, MSBA actually asked them to put it on the ballot for a non-binding referendum. If that failed, they would have been out of the project. I suspect if this fails, much the same for Stoughton. So as, as Dr. Baeta mentioned, building, if this committee votes no to go forward, we, building committee would meet, we would have to report that to MSBA because they are following this article, and they do follow everything in the town. So we would report that to MSBA, and they did grant us an extension through April. It's up to them whether they wanna stick with that, but I suspect they would say, here's not a good sign to keep that $47 million in an account through April if it's gonna fail in April, so.
My question is, if we don't, will you, will you, will you change the plan so that you could change people's, will the building committee change their plan? Still meet the same standard you're supposed to, but there are some things in there that you don't, you don't need to have in there. Number one, my neighbors do not want a pickleball at a grade school. There are certain things they don't want at a grade school that the other grade schools do not have, and if they're already meeting the standard...
Right.
So can you come back and meet the Stoughton standard?
Sure. So, Stoughton standard, let me clarify. Nobody ever voted to put pickleball in. That was a design feature that we thought was attractive. The landscaping generally, and the fields, and what's gonna be there for fields, none of that has been settled in design. So the question about a pickleball court, even though it's a sticking point, is conceptual, that still has to go through the planning board, through site plan review, through all the permitting, and none of that has been done. It was a conceptual plan that we put out there, all the permitting parts and what goes into the nuts and bolts that go into that plan, those are to follow. And to your question, so we can, as Dr. Baeta again said, MSBA granted us this extension, this extraordinary extension through April. We cannot change the scope of the project, and some of this, I'm saying, is sort of me editorializing others I know for sure, other parts of it I know for sure. We cannot touch, not a single component of the educational program or any educational components of that building. So, and I would consider all the bricks, mortar, and everything inside the walls and the roof are untouchable. We can change some things in the, around the edges, in landscaping, in access, but if this goes to a vote and it's approved, we have more leeway. There are change orders on projects all the time. Let me also remind you, so it's $66 million, the town's investment in this project. $6 million of that is contingency. Now, on the high school project, we didn't touch about $5 to $6 million of contingency that was never borrowed. So if that holds true for this project, this is more like a $60 million project. There's also, this was supposed to be delivered by construction management at risk. That's a $3 million fee. I think that would save us money in the long run, but we could take that off and do it under what's called design bid build. That's another $3 million. We could also revisit the access. We can do all sorts of things if this town votes to go forward with the project. If not, we have to start from scratch. And I'll, just for context, Dr. Baeta, I individually, and the architect also, individually and independently of each other, all researched the question, if this has to come out of the MSBA grant program, how long to get back in? And we all came up with the same rough answer. I think it's, on average, about five years, and in our case, longer. And if you wanted to do a middle school, I suspect they would, first of all, they would look at the town of Stoughton and say, you've already identified the South School as something that needs to be fixed, so take care of that before you apply for the middle school. So we can't jump one project over the other. And the second part of that is, I suspect their confidence in the town of Stoughton would be down on the priority list also. And I'm not saying that's a reason to vote for it, because I think you have the financial incentives that have been put in front of you that suggest this is the most cost-effective solution. There is no $30 million school, and there is no $300 per square foot construction costs in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Not today, not ever, not for a town like Stoughton unless you have a reimbursement rate the size of like New Bedford or North Adams, who are far below us in the criteria that Dr. Baeta outlined. I'm going over, I apologize. I hope I answered all that, Karen.
Just as long as all the grade schools are equal. That's all I can add.
Karen, Karen, thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. All right, let's move on. Next up is Joseph Scardino, and then we go to Carolyn.
This question, through you, Mr....
Identify yourself, please.
Yes, Joe Scardino, Precinct 1. Through you, Mr. Moderator, for the town manager. Back to your point about the statute that allows seniors, and I wanna make sure I heard that correctly, that is a deferment of taxes, correct?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
It has to be repaid.
Yeah.
The statute says both deferment and Brian, I just gave it to Brian, it says deferment, and it says, there are two different terms that I thought were contradictory. Brian read it and gave me clarity. Whatever is deferred must be repaid under this program. The one that Cynthia was referencing, I don't believe is a deferment. It's not. It's a refund.
So my next question, is the deferment rate of interest the same as the lien interest if you don't pay your taxes?
I believe that is set by policy by the select board. The DOR, as they do with everything, gives us guidance. Brian may have the answer in front of him, but it's part of the policy voted on by the select board. It's a good question.
Do we have a policy in existence right now?
It, this is a policy for all 351 cities in town. It's not an opt-in, it's not a local option. It's there for town, it's there for all towns.
My understanding was it was 14% the same as the delinquency fees.
Let's have, sorry, interrupt both of you. Town Council's ready to answer that.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, the interest on deferred taxes accrues at 8% or a lower rate voted by the legislative body before July 1st of the tax year. That's during the period of deferral. The payment of deferred taxes and accrued interest is due when the property is sold or when the taxpayer passes away. And at that point, the interest rate goes to 16%, which is the normal statutory rate on collection for unpaid property taxes. So during that deferral period, 8% or less, if the legislative body says so.
Just for...
Okay, we're all set. You had your two questions. Next up, Carolyn Campbell.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. I have, I guess, a question that has come up based on things that have been said. As I understand this, this is a, basically like a referendum or a resolution, is, you know, not binding on anyone other than expressing our will tonight. Am I correct on that?
Would you, yes.
So then, given that, could the select board go forth and put this before the process again and put it on the ballot without this resolution?
Mr. Cavy would like to answer that, please?
Theoretically, yes. It is not binding, but if this body votes no to move forward, you know, it would be my, my judgment is that they wouldn't vote yes for the appropriation after saying they don't wanna move forward. And so the select board would have to deliberate as to whether it made any sense at all to do that, to call a special town meeting for a body that told us no, and to have an election for, after we've been told no.
And then the second question I have is...
There was two already.
No, the, I'm sorry, the, I...
You said it wasn't a referendum that was answered, and then the second question.
Oh, oh.
Okay, two questions.
May I have a point of personal privilege to ask the second part?
No.
All right, then, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to come back during debate, but not for questions. Mr. Walsh, did you have a question?
Yeah, Dave Walsh, Precinct 3. In fact, I think it may be backing to Carolyn's question, because I was a little confused on the answer to that. So if this body does vote no, will the selectmen take it up even though it's no vote here? And I think it's a double-edged question because one is, will the selectmen do take it up? And the question is the legality of doing it. So it's kind of a two-fold question, one for the selectmen and one for legal counsel, whether they could do that.
Who would like to answer that? Town Council, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, I can only answer that in a purely, you know, from a purely legal perspective. I'm not a part of the policymaking body of this town, but from a purely legal perspective, yes, the select board could continue to consider it, which it'll probably do, put it on an agenda and discuss it among the membership. But as a common sense matter, it's this body that would be the membership of a special town meeting, and this body that would have to vote on an appropriation. So I imagine the discussion before the select board would be tempered by the fact this body just voted it down, and so why would they put it back in front of the body again? So legally, yes, that's possible. I mean, it's within the scope of their authority to call for a special town meeting and insert a warrant article on the question. But as a common sense matter, I think we're, at some point this evening, I hope, gonna hear the answer to this question. And that will be advisory, but very instructional. And I imagine the select board would take that into consideration.
Okay, and I guess, does the select board have an opinion on what path forward they would go, either way?
Okay, did you, did you already, Mr., I think, Mr. Cavy, didn't you already answer that before?
Yeah, I mean, we have never discussed it. And so we've got no, no, no direction whatsoever to offer at this point. We've never deliberated on it, and we're not allowed to speak about these things outside of public meetings, so it's just never come up, and we have no, no, no answer for you as to what, what direction we'll take.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavy. All right, Lisa, you already asked your questions, correct?
Yeah, I'm up here for pro-con debate.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. No, we're not gonna move the question right now. We're gonna go on pro-and-con debate now, okay? And I just wanna say, before we start the pro-and-con debate, we do have, I did get notified by three town residents who are not town meeting reps. They would like to, they asked the moderator if they could speak. I informed them that if time allows... could speak. I informed them that if time allows, as the debate progresses, if nobody cuts off debate, they're able to speak. All right. Well, I'll have that, I'll have town council. They say they could speak, but doesn't say they have that right to speak. Well, are you asking for a ruling?
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's stop right now. All right.
Because we-
Who's, just give us a moment here. We've just got to take some names down here.
Miracles happen. But did you hear me?
All right. We have, we have lots of lines here. Okay. I'm going to take Lisa Lyons first. You have three minutes, and then I'll pop back to Carolyn Campbell. Right, Lisa, identify yourself again for the record.
Okay. Can I do a point of order for just a sec?
No.
It's very brief.
No, no.
It's why do we have to keep announcing our names?
I'm not going to point, I'm not going to-
I'm just saying we could save time if we didn't reintroduce ourselves every second.
All right. It'd be good for the record for people at home. They don't know who you are.
Okay. Lisa Lyons, precinct two.
Thank you.
All right. I think everybody knows I am against this.
Just speak up a little louder.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Yes, thank you. Okay. So, I think everybody here and at home may know that I am against this project for, for multiple reasons. We had an election, and taxpayers' votes matter. To suggest that Stoughton taxpayers didn't know what they were voting for, and that the yes voters didn't have enough time when there was two years of getting out their message is an insult to every taxpayer in this town. Furthermore, there is a trust issue with the leadership in this town with the misinformation, the fear tactics, and master manipulation that takes place with their facts. We've seen it on display here tonight. They talk about debt avoidance. I think the taxpayers at this point, the shrewd and rightly skeptical Stoughton taxpayers, know that there is an avoidance of leadership to protect the taxpayer. To suggest that there would be massive cuts to the budget is nothing short of absurd, as is the suggestion of a base repair, a reno, or a modular. No Stoughton No More Tax Campaign people ever suggested any such thing. But to make a whole conversation about it is unacceptable. The trust leadership, just looking at this stage right here, we have project managers and school officials who could have told, looked and tested the work that we have done. This is a $440,000 fix on a near brand-new school that everybody keeps raving about. It's nothing short of unacceptable. The Route 139 disaster that was closed for two years is in shambles. We, as Stoughton taxpayers, are rightly skeptical and deserve to ask questions without being censored and ignored by our leadership. And this will double down vote no, because there needs to be some respect for the taxpayers. We, there is absolutely a way we could start building a new school for these kids right now within the budget. And to suggest otherwise that there'll be massive cuts is nothing short of fear tactics. Is that three minutes?
That's three minutes. Thank you very much for your comments. We're moving on. Next up, Carolyn Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Campbell. I'm precinct four. And as a longtime shrewd taxpayer that has been a member of this body for too long that I probably should not mention, I am going to urge you all to vote yes on this resolution. Precisely for many of the same reasons that our previous speakers vote, urged you to vote against it. I do agree that there is a level of mistrust. I believe that there is a level of mistrust against, from some of the comments and information that people opposed to this project have been putting out in public. The previous speaker would like you, would like to believe that she and their supporters are the only people that are looking out for the members of, for the taxpayers, and that is not the case. We all are. We may have different versions of how we should spend money, but we are all representing all the taxpayers and all the citizens of the town of Stoughton. That is our job. Second, I think it is, it is fiscally irresponsible not to build a new south school project and take advantage of the MSBA funding. If, you know, the previous speaker has said that there's a plan that she could build a school within the debt, within the budget. I do not know of her qualifications to even propose the plan of the school that would fit within the budget, but I do know in the past, when we have borrowed everything within the budget, like at the late 1990s, when we built, did many capital projects, including building the fire station two and the current police station, we never did a debt exclusion for any of them. And then in 2001, when the, there were problems in the budget, debt service became extremely high, and we had to make debt serious cuts throughout the schools, throughout the town budget. That was when the trash fee came into effect, all to handle the debt service that we had incurred that was all within the budget. At that time, the people who spoke to us, the auditors, the external auditors, said, "A fiscally responsible community will do long-term capital projects such as building new buildings through debt exclusions." That is the fiscally responsible manner in which to do them. And I believe that is still the case, and I believe we should all act in a fiscally responsible manner and plan to build a new south school with a debt exclusion, and that the select board should take all available steps to make sure that that happens." Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go up here in the back. Jonah, will you pull us up there? Rosenblatt, please identify yourself.
Jonah Rosenblatt, precinct seven. "The whole crux of the article is to relinquish authority to the selectmen to allow for a revote. And that's just so insulting, because the people have spoken, and the majority are being ignored in favor of a smaller group, the minority who lost the vote. They devised a working group to address this with incredibly biased people for the sole purpose of shoving this overpriced school down our throats. Their document is not an honest assessment of viable solutions and should be vehemently denied. There weren't two sides to the debate. There were all yes people in the working group because the vice chair had to invite a no person to inform them of our perspectives, although that was a magnanimous gesture on her part. I know of what I say because I personally offered to be in this group as a no voter, and the curator declined me and was also stating that they couldn't find no people to join this group. How can we possibly use this group as a barometer to determine whether we should revote when every member was a pro-revote person? Talk about misinformation. This group claims now that we'll be forced to have modules. Who said that? There's no factual basis for that. And then the claim that the school isn't safe for much longer, but in their own report, they state the school could be used for a preschool after the new school is built. How can that be? If it's not safe now, it's not going to be safe later. More importantly, if it can be used for a preschool, then why not continue using it? The results they state just don't make any sense, and they also claim that the property values will rise if this top school, over-the-top school is built." That's nonsense. A basic design school with an esoteric curriculum is far more advantageous for property values than a town buried in debt exclusions. Weirheim was able to build a basic design school for 900 students for under $75 million, while the working group thinks that we should accept $114 million for only roughly 300 students without challenging it. Instead of consideration of our ideas, we're thwarted and vitriol. All we want is to compromise and work together for wise and wise solutions. To the yes people, can you just open your eyes for once and consider a solution that takes all citizens' finances into consideration, and see that all the no people want is to offer an option to residents in a fiscally responsible way? Your group ignores that basic premise and only offers a revote for the only answer. There's plenty of other options out there, and if the no people had been involved, there would have been true debate here tonight that we could have used here tonight. Our group has ideas worth considering, like devising a capital plan and saving money, just simply saving money to achieve our goal. The working group wants to keep adding another debt exclusion on top of another, on top of another, to bury us. And we're just shouting out from under the rubble, "Stop adding taxes until you retire some of the existing debt."
Time, time.
Well, wait a minute. I just, I only have two sentences left.
Excuse me, time, time. I'm not giving any extensions. I'm going down over here.
Stop the tax and spend and-
Excuse me, I ask you-
Honor the will of the people who have voted.
I ask you to stop. Please, please leave the room for a couple minutes, because-
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, next up, Marina Ryaz.
Should I introduce myself still?
What's that?
Marina Ryaz, precinct seven. "I just want to remind that the school is not the problem. The problem is the cost. By pushing this project on taxpayers, you're going to destroy a lot of families with different incomes. Most importantly, people with low income, big families, and seniors on fixed income. They are already panicking. Some of them are crying. We are paying our dues just to make sure there is no additional taxes will be thrown at us. And there is a way to do this if, you know, our, the select board or town officials listen to our votes. We voted no, not against the school, against the price. And there is a way to do this. So, we can, please, come up with, you know, a reasonable price for the school without, you know, tax override. Also, wanted to remind that if, God forbid, this school goes through, we're going to be paying, it's not one-time payment that we're talking about. We're talking about 20, 30 years payments on top of library and house, and high school, and what's next. So, we can't take it in this inflation. Please, for the last few days, I've received a lot of emails, four or five emails, and the messages pushing me to vote yes. I just wanted to say enough. Please don't push us to vote what you want. Listen to our votes. I can't take any more pressure and manipulation. You suppose as a select board, listen and, you know, serve people of Stoughton, and we have spoken. Most importantly, please shut down the school building committee, so we can start right away on building a new school for a reasonably and practically priced. This can be done without, within the budget, without a tax override. Thank you."
All right. Thank you for your comment. Back over here, could you identify yourself, please?
Lindsay Weber, precinct five. "Thank you to Lori and everyone else that has worked tirelessly to make sure that the narrative surrounding this project has been fact-based. Stoughton urgently needs a new school to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our children. With the new building, we can prioritize the well-being of students and staff, ensuring their protocols are met while fostering an atmosphere of academic growth and excellence. Every child deserves a school that not only promotes learning, but also guarantees their safety, giving them peace of mind to excel. Modular units do not provide the level of safety our children deserve. Modular's not only put our students and staff at risk, as the town manager mentioned earlier, funding for critical programs would also be at risk with the use of modulars. It's unfortunate to hear comments say this building is too nice, and we need to lower the plan to meet the standards of Stoughton. I'm proud to live in Stoughton, and our students should be proud to walk into their school each morning. I asked town meeting to vote yes tonight, and I respectfully ask the select board to bring this to another town-wide vote."
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next up, Pat Colburn. Please identify yourself.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. "I am very strongly for this. I hope it passes. I'm a senior. I'm divorced. I don't have as much money as I used to, but this is the right thing to do. Everybody's talking about the equality of the middle schools. It baffles me, because there was the outcry when the thousands and thousands and thousands of south school students didn't have the same equality as the other schools. That's not right, and we have a chance to fix that." As, as for the no vote, I really have tried to listen, but it's really hard to hear through the misinformation. And I did have a conversation with a gentleman very much against it, who was on the finance committee. And I asked him at town meeting, are people deliberately misinforming, or do they not understand? And the responses I got was, well, you know how Facebook is. Anyone can say whatever they want. It's up to people to correct it. So, here is our chance to correct it. And the last thing I have to say is, it's really easy to throw stones at the people who did all the work. I've sat up there. I remember when I put footnotes on the budget and got land-based because they were too small. So, I mean, I get it, but the no faction could have petitioned an article. Why aren't we looking at one tonight saying we want to build a school, and we want to fund it this way? They didn't give us anything to consider. This is the option, and it does include $47 million from the state. And for people who say it's not free money, well, guess what? If Stoughton doesn't get it, somebody else will. So, I want Stoughton to get it. I want those kids to finally get what they deserve. And I want the people who are against it to actually start doing some work and giving us something rather than waving sheets of paper. Thank you."
All right. Thank you for your comments. Up over here, please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Anne Fisk, in precinct three. "I was born, raised, educated in Stoughton. I currently teach at all five elementary schools and the O'Donnell Middle School every week, and I have for 13 years. I'm not speaking as a Stoughton public school employee, but as a town meeting rep, as a homeowner in town and a parent. I am enthusiastically in favor of the new elementary school project, and I'm in favor of allowing the residents of Stoughton the ability to vote without a cloud of disinformation obstructing fact. To respect the body's time, I will not repeat the benefits of the new school, the extensive problems at the current south school, the school safety concerns, and so on. They have been adequately covered by the previous speakers. However, we have had years of open meetings, community forums, engagement with stakeholders to solve this problem. And the professionals and stakeholders looked at 11 options, and they landed on the new building design with the MSBA funding. Teachers in general do more with less every single day, year after year, and they will continue to do so if they need to. But as they realize that Stoughton does not care for them, or their students, or their health and safety, slowly but surely, we will see tenured teachers leave. Young families will move away. And the residents who remain will still have to find 30, 50, 70 million dollars to put a Band-Aid on this problem with zero, zero capital improvements. Stoughton opened four elementary schools and the junior high over only 11 years between 1960 and 1971. Your parents, your grandparents, your neighbors prioritized, invested in, and chose to pay for you and your children's education. It is time for us to invest in our children's and hopefully their children's education as well. If we don't allow this project to move forward, as is with the MSBA funding, what services are we comfortable cutting? Council on Aging? Visiting nurses? Fire? Police? Teachers? What are we cutting to save $100 million? And for how long will we have to live with those cuts in order to build this building ourselves? There's no plan. There just isn't one. And so, I ask, why are we afraid of letting the town vote with clarity of facts? Why would we prevent the residents from having a say in the matter with full understanding of how expensive the alternatives are? Please vote yes. Thank you."
All right. Thank you for your comments. Next up is Robert Kirby.
Hi, Robert Kirby, precinct six. "I'm a no vote, and I don't suspect anything that I say will frankly move the needle in this room tonight. But I will share my experience as a town meeting rep. I did go out amongst my neighbors and even many residents in my area who I didn't know personally, but just met them in conversation and talked to them about this project back when it was up for a vote last time around. And I would say eight out of 10 people that I spoke to were not in favor and were concerned about the taxes and so forth. And it wasn't just elderly people. They were people of every strata. So, the general consensus that I found was no. And the vote that went out had an exceptionally good showing in terms of people. I know that a lot of people said that, you know, it's just a small fraction of people in the town who actually vote, but actually for this particular vote, there was quite a good showing, much above average, which shows the fact that the voters were motivated. And I suspect that when this, if this does come up for another town-wide vote, which it probably will, because- it probably will, because it'll be approved in this room tonight, and it'll, and it'll happen all over again, the same result will happen. And I don't think that, um, the, the needle's gonna move, as, as hopeful as the people that are in favor of this project are. Uh, I think the fundamental reason is, the people that are not in favor of this project are not, not in favor of a new school, they want a more economical presentation. And notwithstanding the fact that there's MSBA money to be had in this, um, just the scope and the accoutrements and things that are incorporated into this particular project makes it, um, not frugal. And people in this economic climate want frugality. Uh, our parents, our grandparents, great-grandparents, they understood austerity. They, they didn't build lavish schools, they, they had things that were, uh, formulaic, they understood the, the essentials were reading, writing, arithmetic, and they, they focused on those things. And frankly, in those generations, they excelled at what they did because they, they knew how to live through hard times, through the depression and, and times. We've gotten so fat and happy in our day and age that we think we have to have it all, even when our, our economy is truncated and, uh, there's a lot of uncertainty in the world, people are not, um, certain where their jobs are gonna be in a year or two years. The elderly, um, and Cynthia brought up the point-
Mr. Kirby, time. That's time. Time's up, three minutes. Thank you very much for your comments, appreciate it. Next up, Matthew Callis, please identify yourself, please.
Matthew Callis, Precinct Three. I, I have a son at the South School, and some of the South teachers are here in attendance today. Uh, the way I look at it, you put a kid in a modular classroom, they're expensive, you have to replace them, they're not as good. Is this the town we are, that we put our kids in modulars? I, I don't think it is. Um, I have my own anecdotal evidence of talking to people who say they just didn't show up because they assumed it would pass. Um, I won't repeat everything the other speaker said, I'll just ask for a yes vote tonight. Let's put it to the people when we have time to explain it properly and see what the town says. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, while this, I wanna, not to you, Dave Laurie, hang on a second, I just wanna say the three residents, town residents that asked to speak, asked me if they could speak, if they can, if they don't mind coming down, there's three of them. If they wanna come down, just come over here. Want me-
True, I think, I think they'd be able to speak.
Okay. Are you one? Okay, you wanna come on this side? You can speak after Mr. Laurie when we get to him. Thank you. Rachel, right? Okay. Uh, next up in the back there, could you identify yourself, please?
Hello, Peter Matusula, Precinct Five. Due to the extensive narrative and preamble during the technical questions, I ask that we move the question?
Uh, you wanna move the question right now?
Yes, please, yes.
There's a lot of people that wanna talk, I'm gonna let the town resident speak first before, um, this, it's the moderator's discretion. Rachel, will you please identify yourself?
Can I, can I make a comment then afterwards, please?
Well, hang on a second.
Yeah, after, yeah.
Go ahead, please identify yourself, name and address.
Uh, hi, my name is Rachel Lazarus, I live at 25 Jordan Drive in Precinct Four. Thank you so much for letting me speak, Mr. Mellon. Uh, I just wanna say, um, I kind of like data a lot, and I was really impressed by Lisa Lyons's chart, uh, that she brought, but I was a little confused about it because I didn't know why she selected the towns that she selected. When you're trying to demonstrate that we are paying way too much, or cost by square foot, that, you have to pick towns that are like us. And so, I made a couple charts, this is one of them, with the same towns Lisa used and some of the same information, I used the same source, um, and you can see, yeah, we pay a lot, uh, for, uh, cost per square foot, but you know what? We pay only 191 per student, and for me personally, that's way more important to me than cost per square foot, the cost per student, how many students are we serving and how well are we doing with that? Uh, I also wanna say, our alternative costs are way higher than any other of the towns that she listed, and our poverty rate is actually much lower than those other towns. So those other towns are getting more funding from the MSBA because they need it. We are not actually a destitute town. Some people may feel that way, but we are doing relatively well. We are way up in the median income than those other towns. So if you, you have to ask the right questions and you have to find the right comparisons, and unfortunately, I think she missed mark on some of those, data's very difficult. I also, uh, I was not part of the working group, um, I did want to say, I made a chart, or I made a stacked bar graph of the thing in the chart that they had in the summary, so that you can see what the cost would be at the minimum that we would be paying. So this is this, our primary cost, our secondary cost, that little tiny thing is the modulars we'll need if the South School building fails, and then you can see modulars only, very, very expensive, South base repair, still expensive, South School add-on reno for 50 years, pretty expensive. And then at the max, the modulars only is the most extensive option we could be getting, and that is what will happen, almost certainly, if we do not vote yes to the new school budget. Um, I have a lot to say, I would also say, like, I really do believe that we can all profit from this, there's no need to be pitting parents and senior citizens against each other. I personally have been helping, uh, senior citizens in this town apply for the Massachusetts, uh, circuit breaker thing. There are more options out there, I'd love to talk to you about it, hit me up on Facebook, I've been posting Stoughton News a lot. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, why don't we do this? Because we, it's a long night, long debate. What if I say five and five, five positive, five negative, and then we decide that we wanna cut off debate?
Moderator, we're going to debate, and the next speaker will be there. Left back of this line, you're over there.
Uh, Mr. Canzino, I didn't recognize you yet, but thank you for that information. Mr. Laurie, did you lead that line?
I did.
Sir, he's right behind me.
I didn't recognize you either, but thank-
I, I agree. I, I did do that.
Uh, why don't you go back over-
Because there's nobody here.
I know that, but you're in line over there. Look, we can go on all night here.
You could ignore me, but-
All right, I'm gonna recognize this gentleman, why don't we do-
Mr. Moderators, I, I ask of you, since that person has spoken now, would you consider a vote?
Uh, you're saying-
To move the, to move-
Move the question.
Move the question, please.
Is there a second? The moderator has discretion. We, we don't do it during technical question time. All, all you have to do is, if those who people, Mr. Vintresco, excuse me, let the moderator speak, and it's up to the wisdom of the town meeting reps. We're gonna set up the vote, if you wanna cut off debate, it needs two-thirds. You vote, if you don't wanna cut off debate, you either vote for it, or you vote, vote no not to cut off debate. I'm leaving it up to wisdom of the town meeting reps. We can go all night, sir. All right? We, uh, motion to cut off debate's been made, and I think Denise Walsh, should you second With the clickers, please vote with the clicker, this is the cutoff debate. I know, I'm just saying, it's, you need a two-thirds to cut off debate. All right? Everybody understand that? Is it up? All right, please vote now, one, two, or three. Okay, uh, let me just give the vote. The motion to cut off debate passes, one, 22 yes, 20 no, one abstentions. Now we're gonna vote on the merits of the question, Article 15. I just got notified that someone left something in the ladies' room, someone left something in the ladies' room. If, I'm not sure what it was.
Bracelet.
What was it, a bracelet? There was a bracelet in the ladies' room. All right, are we ready to vote?
This is simple majority, right? Simple majority, right?
Okay, this is simple majority, just wanna double check. Please vote now, one, two, or three, simple majority. All right, Article 15 passes by a majority of 111, yes, 34 no, zero abstentions. And I get a motion, Mr. Zelinski.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene for the annual in April.
I move that we dissolve this special town meeting.
Yes, who did that? Who's saying that?
I did. Carolyn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter Murphy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Thank you.